With liberty and justice for all.
We gotta do it again?
That is kind of pitiful. Maybe we should donate one. Hanging on the wall.
You can certainly move this, you know, you can move that table over, slide that table over.
Boop, boop, boop.
Move the back.
Get closer. Whoa.
Yep, at the, at the limit, but I think here's fine. Thanks for having me back on this beautiful fall evening. I know everyone would probably rather be outside, but um thanks for sitting through a pretty important part of our plan tonight. And probably one that you guys live and breathe more than the other elements with your land use application process. Before we get into the details, figure I just give a quick update on schedule. We are still right on track. And we have about a month gap between uh between this meeting and our next meeting, which we will talk about the infrastructure element. And that will conclude our initial plan elements part of our project. And then we'll start transitioning to the goals, objectives, strategies, and the future land use plan. So um one thing that um I think maybe warrants discussion after our infrastructure element is how do we want to leverage the special focus area that we have in our scope? I think since we kind of talked through some issues tonight and maybe any issues around infrastructure element, we'll have a better idea of how we wanna spend that uh that fee. And we can talk about, you know, timing, when's best to have that um that meeting focused on the special focus area. We'll start our goals, objectives, and strategies um this fall. And then our intent would be to have a second public workshop sometime in early twenty twenty four. Once we have some initial ideas floating out there, we can ask the public for some input before we release a full draft plan. Um and we may also have kind of a special focus exercise if a topic in particular floats to the top. So I'm not gonna go through the survey results, uh but I hope you all had a chance to look at them. I'd say they were pretty consistent with the feedback we gathered at the workshop. I'd say nothing was really too surprising. I'd say one thing I found interesting was comparing the results from this survey to the results from the twenty thirteen survey. And there were some issues where they were really um opinion has changed pretty rapidly. And so what I intend to do is kind of um have that be sprinkled into some of our discussion tonight. And also in the infrastructure element, if there's some relevant survey questions. So before we get into the nuts and bolts in the discussion, I wanted to give a brief overview of some key trends. And we'll start with our community demographics. And we've gone over this a little bit in our kickoff meeting, but I think this helps set some context for the development trends that you're seeing in the community. You are one of the fastest growing towns in the region. So between twenty ten and twenty twenty, you added twelve hundred residents. So your growth rate was among the top ten percent in Connecticut municipalities. What was interesting is that um the growth rate is actually pretty consistent with what you've experienced since about nineteen ninety. So that level of growth has been really consistent over the last thirty years. We did do a more detailed look at what's called a population component analysis. And that in the population can grow one of two ways. You have more births than deaths or more people move to your community. And what we found is that over that ten year period between twenty ten and twenty twenty, you had about roughly equal numbers of births and deaths. So no natural increase. And so almost all of those twelve hundred new residents are due to net migration. So more people moving into South Windsor than moving out. And um I think some of that's the generational turnover that we've seen um through our work with the school district, where you may have folks who had kids, they age out of the school system, and then they sell their house to a new family who has children. We also have an aging population. So I thought it was interesting looking at the percent of the town's population aged sixty five years old and over, looking at it over the twenty year period. As of twenty twenty, nineteen percent of your population is aged sixty five and over. And that compares to fifteen percent in twenty ten and twelve percent in two thousand. And most of that growth is what I'll call our, our younger uh senior population. So folks that are probably still pretty independent. But as we move ten years ahead, thinking about twenty thirty four, that group uh may have some new needs um around housing services and the like. And then we also have an influx of new families, uh which when we do our age group comparison, you can see in the uh the twenties and thirties age group. And this is really our, our prime age group to have school age children. And so we've seen a rise in that group as well.
So the group that's moving out, um you know, obviously apparently we might assume they're, the kids have gone off to college and the house is an empty mess and they can't afford it. So but that's also a group, an age group that I think is really important for developing leadership in the town. So it does kind of bother me to see that much.
So caveat by saying this isn't, so everyone moves up to age groups. And so a lot of the, the reds are just smaller, you know, you have a smaller group of people, you know, forty to fifty four years old than you had in the boomer generation, I'll say. And then you have the larger millennial generation that's bigger than um the Gen Xers that were in their, you know, thirties during the last plan. So even if it's in the red, it doesn't necessarily mean that those people are moving out. It just means that you have just some larger generations that um their needs just become a little more evident as they age in place.
So I think what you're saying is that these peaks and valleys move up and that causes a particular age group to move down. But if we looked at, I don't know how to look at it, you know, that ten year ago group as they've aged, are we losing them? Or, you know, is there some way to tell if we're losing people or whether you're just seeing what you said, which is shifting uh?
Yeah, we, we could compare the, the um the same age group, you know, subtracted ten years and see um if there's any, you know, positive or negative migration. That's certainly something we could do.
I would suspect that this is life change driven. So if you looked at this chart for, I'll say, any similar town, I would think it would look similar. Do you agree or?
I believe that that is the case, especially up here at the top. I know a lot of towns may have less of an increase down here in the, the um, you know, mid twenties to late thirties age group. It might be a smaller increase, um but that's the, the big millennial generation that's replacing the, you know, the smaller Gen Xers who are kind of aging into their, their forties. And so, yes, the, those two age groups are pretty typical of um peer communities in Connecticut. And so the demographics, I think, also help frame the conversation around housing needs. So we have our growing, I'll say, you know, our families uh family age groups. And then we also have our growing um senior age groups. And to accommodate those twelve hundred new people, part of that growth is due to housing. So since the last plan, you've added five hundred new housing units, and half of those were multifamily. And while your community still remains predominantly single family homes, owner occupied, you have had a growth in share of your community who's renting and living in non-single family homes, uh but those still remain predominant. And what we've seen throughout the state and the nation is this um trend of increasing housing costs. And it's really accelerated since um twenty twenty, where single family home prices have increased dramatically in South Windsor by thirty percent. And rents have also increased uh across the state. I thought this was a pretty interesting data point. We pulled the Zillow um monthly rents for South Windsor as of July, and it was twenty-two hundred a month for rentals in South Windsor, which um is pretty high growth in terms of uh rent relative to income. So affordability um is going to continue, I think, to be an issue in the near term until some of these um market forces work themselves out. And, you know, we certainly want to give you guys a, a pat on the back for your proactive approach to planning for housing. You guys have been
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing and for housing in general. You've kind of been flexible in terms of um evaluating housing needs on a case by case basis, making some modifications to your zoning regulations, uh having policies in place with your recent changes to your um so uh zoning and subdivision regulations around inclusionary zoning. And so we think that's a commendable um effort that you guys are undertaking. The economy is also um what we thought an interesting data point. And again, I think it reflects what you've all seen in terms of your land use applications and I think what a lot of people are seeing in terms of the proliferation of um warehousing and distribution facilities. Like the last plan noted, you guys have a very strong industrial base. It remains your largest employment sector in twenty twenty one. But our transportation and warehousing sector is now a close second, uh of almost two uh two thousand jobs as of twenty twenty one. That may be higher now, um if you have some facilities that have come on.
When you say transportation, you're meaning moving goods or are you talking about getting on a train or getting on an airplane?
So any warehousing and distribution falls into the, what, uh this, the government classifies as transportation and warehousing. So let's.
So when Amazon opens next week, they'll add to that number, I'm guessing then.
And we will supersede manufacturing.
And so if we look at the employment change over the we look at employment change since the last plan, since twenty thirteen, you've added seventeen hundred, almost seventeen hundred and fifty new jobs. So again, that's a positive. About fifteen hundred of those are in transportation and warehousing. So that's really been the largest component of your employment growth. You maintain strong commuter ties to Hartford. Looking at the latest commuting data, about seventeen percent of your residents commute to jobs in Hartford. And a lot of these transportation and warehousing jobs are drawing in workers from throughout the region. So um you've, you've established a really, really a regional employment base in that Route Five corridor. And then finally, looking at incomes relative to the state, um South Windsor's median income, hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, which is higher than both um the region and the state.
Just to remind everybody, industrial, uh high end industrial is a better uh tax basis than the um warehousing and transportation.
For sure.
Oh yeah.
For sure.
Just so everybody knows that.
Absolutely.
So that one twenty seven, is that apples to apples with Michelle with the one eighteen that we use for affordable or is that?
So that's from the American Community Survey, it's not the HUD.
Industrial and manufacturing has a lot of personal property that gets taxed where your warehouses and stuff don't.
And we've lost two hundred and eighty.
Just moving goods.
Talking in absolute dollars because I would think that the footprint for warehousing would be larger. So if we're looking at like per square foot tax.
The square foot.
Well, if we've been able to build the tech, the tech center that um you were talking about ten or fifteen years ago, that would have been more manufacturing and office and it would have been much more tax.
Much, yeah.
I notice we've lost two hundred and eighty-three, is that what that number is, manufacturing jobs and three hundred and twenty-three professional scientific and tech services jobs? So I think that's un- unfortunate.
Yeah, cuz those are the higher end paying jobs. The warehousing and transportation are really like lower end jobs. They, you know, it doesn't require a skill set.
Mostly robotics anyway.
Yeah. What, for the warehousing? No.
No?
No, only for particular ones, like um
So people are still
Say FedEx or Walgreens or Amazon.
Conveyor systems are, they're not, it's not robotic, but there's a lot of conveyor systems, stuff that's taken away. And that's taxable.
One of the, the trends we've seen regionally and statewide is the workforce shortage, especially in the skilled manufacturing trades that may be contributing to the loss of jobs. These may be jobs that exist, but they're just not currently filled. And so I know statewide, a lot of manufacturers are kind of refocusing on job training programs and the like, um especially as they have an aging workforce. So that's something to kind of keep in mind as we get into our goals, objectives, strategies is, you know, could the town partner with other entities that can help with the training gap and stuff for some of these sectors?
I still wanted to hear an answer to my question.
No, that's a different, this is based on the American Community Survey, right? This number here, so it's a different source.
Okay, just thinking, you know, if somebody reads one thing and then reads another is, are they gonna be confused by, different source.
The construction jobs, are those temporary construction jobs or?
So usually it'll be a, like a trades company, so carbon free HVAC, plumbing. So it'll be a company based in South Windsor rather than, for example, someone working on Pleasant Valley School, unless it's a local company.
So that new facility that just got approved off of South Satellite.
Oh, that little startup?
The startup thing, which will be hopefully a lot of trades.
Could be small, small little businesses, sure.
That will hopefully bring in more skilled and licensed uh professionals.
I wanted to touch briefly on development patterns. This is our existing land use map as of early in twenty twenty-three. So we were able to get the latest data from the assessor and the GIS data provided by THAAD. And we broke down uh by category like you had in your previous plan. And it's not an exact apples to apples cuz I think some properties, you know, get classified differently depending on the year. But overall, um we've seen an increase in the amount of residential land. Commercial and industrial and mixed use went up um by about a percentage point since the last plan. Your open space also went up, which is good. And the big difference being the commercial, industrial, and residential gains come from vacant land. But vacant land is also somewhat subjective. And I think if you were to do a side by side of the twenty thirteen plan with this plan, I think the vacant land category is probably one of the main differences, especially if you have, let's say, a single family home on a twenty acre lot. It may be perceived as vacant land, it could support a subdivision if you wanted to. But it is developed. So um I think the next slide does a better job of showing how much development have you seen since the last plan? So we were able to pull any property that had a built date after twenty thirteen. And um you can see um the major developments.
Now, this, this is gonna be part of our plan of conservation and development, correct?
Right.
Okay, I, I, I think it should add a few things like Costco that um are big that aren't mentioned in here. So I, I'm just saying this because if anybody else has input like that, uh this might be the time. Once he finishes, I cut you off, I apologize.
You noted, um and Evergreen Walk's an area where we have our, Buckland Road in general have a lot of stuff. So we've kind of grouped them together, but we can certainly add the details um for individual businesses, especially ones of that magnitude. What you can see here, um the applications that I'm sure have crossed the, this board's desk over the last ten years. We have our multifamily housing, three projects, single family subdivisions um that are primarily in the northern part of town and in the Clark Street corridor, three assisted independent living facilities, um retail uh focused on the Buckland corridor and um Sullivan Avenue corridor. And then our warehousing and distribution facilities in the Route Five corridor here in purple. And I think this is a good kind of framework of, this is indicative of your market. These are the types of businesses that are looking to build or looked to build in South Windsor over the last ten years. And from the data that we've looked at, these sectors largely, in our um professional opinion, will continue to be the drivers, at least in the near future, given, you know, many major market.
So Sullivan Place is Mexicali, Drew and those, okay.
And we should add Pleasant Valley School, which is on Pleasant, um on Ellington Road there.
Yeah, it's probably not finished, but when we got the extract, but we could certainly add that and actually drove by that on my way here. It's massive.
It's massive.
Pleasant Valley University.
P V U, yeah, P V U.
P V U.
I got lost in there twice, I don't think.
Told you you're gonna have a hundred little crying kids that can't find their own.
Nightmares.
All right, so before we pivot into the housing and development, I wanted to talk a little bit about community structure. And community structure is really the overall physical organization of your community. And your zoning map, I think, best reflects um your community structure. So your zoning should really reflect your desired land use mix, uh intensity or density of use, as well as any established nodes, corridors, or gateways. And the community structure piece really becomes the building block to the future land use plan. And so I wanted to just show the existing zoning map first, cuz I think this gives a good representation of our separation between our, yeah.
Can we go back to maps, page twelve? Um in the north uh end on near Rice Street, you've got that wet, uh I believe it's a lot of wetlands.
Yeah.
Colored in yellow for
You know what that is, it's a, it's a single family house lot that got picked up because it's a parcel based map. So it picked up the whole parcel, it's one house lot that went out there.
Right. I just wanna
Pagan Hugan.
I'm not looking to throw up any flags on that.
Okay.
You probably wanna take that one off.
Okay.
Okay. That's McGrath's farm.
Yeah.
It's just a one single family house lot.
In the yellow, in uh the upper left corner is Aldis?
No, that's the gun range that I'm talking about. Okay.
Not really gun range.
Not really.
The gentleman there has, he was on his own property using his guns.
Yeah. Gun range. Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Um what page are we on now, fifteen, please?
Yeah, sure.
You've got the town center overlay area, but you don't have the north central overlay area.
Yeah, so this is just a general call out of where the town center overlay, that should probably be plural areas, right? You have the center.
Yeah, but it still encompasses a little more to the, that lot to the north of that.
Yeah, so we can, we could certainly tweak that, the language there.
Yeah, and I think we, yeah, we, yeah.
And the, I mean, the issue we had last week was this kind of an overlay type of zoning change uh with the multi or affordable housing M A H D, I think it was called. That's sort of an overlay, but it's a little different. Are there other places where that's um gonna happen or?
Well, you, you kind of did the same thing with your Geisse's Plaza, when that finally gets resolved, that's an overlay.
Yeah. Where's got the?
And I think that's where the future land use plan can help you as a commission. You have some of these floating zones, you have one in the Sullivan Ave corridor, you have the new affordable housing floating zone. Do we establish target areas similar to what you did in your affordable housing plan that can help you land back should future applications come?
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm pointing out the north central uh overlay is because if it's not in the plan of conservation and development and they go to develop it, the residents in the area are gonna be screaming, that's not on your plan of conservation and development?
And so we'll make sure that that's all incorporated and then as, as well as we're developing the future land use plan, which really becomes kind of your policy map um around zone changes or development applications. Um we'll make sure those are reflected in there as well. But largely, your community structure is not really changed tremendously since the last plan. We've had development in some particular areas, but the general extent of your commercial zones um is largely the same as they are today. And I've kind of created a hierarchy here as well, just to help um paint some of the picture around the conversation we're gonna have later around some of these individual corridors and business districts. We have the southern end of, um you know, the Buckland Road, Evergreen Walk. That's really part of a larger node that extends beyond South Windsor. So you guys are part of that regional Buckland Hills node. You're grabbing a regional, uh you're having a regional draw for folks in Eastern Hartford County, Talon County. And so that really captures um and functions as essentially one giant node. The town center is much more community focused, and so we've kind of put that second on the hierarchy where it's really your community center, your grocery store, library, town hall, um and it really is that community draw, drawing uh folks from every neighborhood within South Windsor. And then we have some smaller nodes, um Sullivan Ave and our, what we're calling just these neighborhood nodes, um which tend to have just smaller businesses, and so they're more focused on um meeting the needs of the folks who live in that particular part of town.
And Michelle, we should probably get rid of that node up there at um Sullivan Ave and Route Five.
Yeah, actually, I didn't know that one, I think we, that one got added cuz that's not a node we normally would have.
I think it was in the last plan, but I don't know, we had talked.
No, no, what we wanted to add, what I suggested on our plan is, I agreed to get rid of that one there, but I did suggest adding one at Pleasant Valley. Cuz the Pleasant Valley where Splash Pool and Dunkin Donuts and all that area there, um there
And that construction company, it's not fun.
Not this, and that's in the residential zone, that area there you may see come in for requests to rezone in the next year or two or three because there's some vacant land right behind the um ice rink, right? That's residentially zoned, it has some commercial uses um going on there. So that node, but the one on the north, I think because of the north, you've got across the street, you have a conservation needs, but on the main street side, on the other side, you have town owned land that is not developable. And then you have the fire property, really, that really is nothing to develop on that corner. So I would definitely remove that at that point.
Thank you.
And then in addition to our active corridors, so our Route Five, Sullivan Ave, Buckland Road corridors, we can also add in passive corridors, which we talked about in our conservation workshop, where we can add things like the cross town trail or riverfront. And again, these are the building blocks to the future land use uh map. We'll have um more detailed discussions on that um in our either December or um February workshop.
So the, the two um passive corridors, I, in the previous P O C D, there were a lot more hiking, biking type routes shown. I think these are obviously the highest priority, uh but uh just wondering, um
There was a Greenways plan that was separate.
Yeah.
Certainly have a more extensive one.
So in our next meeting, do we get into the sidewalks and things like that?
Yes.
Yeah, so at the next meeting, Steve, will be when we're looking at that stuff more specifically, yeah.
Any more questions on community structure before we move into housing? I think this is kind of the crux of, you know, probably one of the biggest issues that you as a commission I think this is kind of the crux of, you know, probably one of the biggest issues that you as a commission. Need to kind of wrangle over the course of the next few months for this plan, it's, it's really our competing objectives around housing. We, we have housing needs, uh, whether that be affordable housing, whether that be housing for your, the growing senior population. We have market demand, people wanna move to South Windsor, um, and is there, um, is there housing to meet that market demand? Or will, um, will that kind of be restricted? And we have to balance those housing needs with school capacity, um, in most towns I work in, that's not really an issue. Here, I think it is a, um.
Definitely.
You know, a, a, a serious issue where you may not have the capacity to handle substantial housing growth, at least in the near term. And that was evident in the community survey where that was identified as really a key issue in the community. And then balancing that as well with, if we have new housing development. You know, certainly there may be some redevelopment opportunities, but if we look at the housing that's been developed over the last ten years. Much of that was developed on not protected open space, but vacant land. And so the loss of vacant land, whether that be farmland or forest to development. Um, which again was a key concern in the survey, and so I think it's gonna be, how do we strike that right balance where. You know, we recognize there's housing needs that are, that continue to be, um, that need to be met over the next decade. While balancing that with the real, you know, concerns around school capacity and, and loss of open space. And I kind of want you to keep that in the front of your mind and, um.
I mean, I, anecdotally, um. People who have a single-family house, um. Wanna get out, they're getting older, um, to go looking for a place to live, and if they're not independently wealthy. They really can't find a place to settle when they're, if they move into.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Steve, cause I was looking at like our S R Ds, senior residence developments. I believe we have like two hundred and forty units in town over, like, is it twenty-six developments?
No, there's not that many.
Not that many. I forget how many.
Yeah, ten or twelve, but, but yeah.
But that's a place where we could add housing and it wouldn't affect our school systems. Per se.
Except for who's moving in is Steve, who's got a four-bedroom house, that's.
Five.
Right.
That's.
Five.
Five bedrooms.
That's a dilemma I see.
Turnover, yeah.
That's a dilemma I see, when we create housing for our seniors in town and say, create new families' opportunities.
Yeah.
Um, I, I see we've, uh, we have school capacity up there, do we want to say, touch on town services at all at this point? Uh, or is that secondary?
So I think when we talk about infrastructure, we'll roll, uh, town services and facilities in there, but if there's any specific ones related to housing. I know when we had some more, um, staff interviews, we had heard kind of increased calls from some of the assisted living.
Yep.
Facilities, that's certainly a concern around, um.
Right.
And again, is it housing, is it a commercial use, that can be debated, but certainly. Certain types of developments may have an increase in services that, you know, certainly can't be overlooked as well.
Well, again, as this demographic proceeds into the older people, even if they live in a single-family house, they're calling ambulances a lot more.
And, uh, something that's not necessarily a, well, land use question, but something I think more broadly for the town is this concept of aging in place. And are there additional services that can help folks, um, stay in their single-family homes for longer? Perhaps it's buying you a little bit of time as your current, um, peak in school enrollment maybe. Decreases over time and you have a little bit more capacity. Um, so that, I think, also plays into the housing question is, do we have, you know, can we focus on some of these supporting services that can keep. Those seniors in their homes and comfortable and, um, independent for longer.
You might want to also, uh, uh, I forgot, was it in this town or other towns where they have groups? Um, you know, quasi-handymen, senior volunteers who, you know. You need to change your battery or your smoke detector and you're no longer able to get on a ladder, what are you gonna do? Well, found electrician?
Yep.
Or do you just, you know, try to develop these volunteer groups that can take care of the little things? Changing that light bulb on the ceiling, you know?
That was something that the strategic plan that the town council just adopted actually had as one of the goals, just is how do we increase?
Maybe that's what I thought.
Yeah, it might be, how do we increase, um, uh, services to help seniors stay in place? And there may be some things, you know, that may happen through senior services or things like that, but that is certainly. A goal that was talked about through the strategic planning for the same reasons of not opening up another house for, you know, more schoolchildren potentially. So if we can have our seniors, I know they were talking at the council, you know, about tax fees and, you know, what programs are currently are for seniors. So again, I think that dialogue is a community dialogue that's, you know, ongoing a little bit.
Let me ask, uh, I guess a conceptual question. So I got rattling around in my head, Ben Tripp, who told us that there's a waiting list of three hundred people at Berry Patch. So. How would a town approach that, I mean, I guess, I guess you can look at it and say, wow, we have high demand. We need to accommodate that high demand by coming up with something. Or. Uh, they're just gonna have to find someplace to live in another town. I mean, is that the kind of thing that towns?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a couple of ways to look at it, one is certainly your zoning regulations, you have. Your new flexible floating zone on Berry Patch isn't, um, income restricted, right?
It is, yes, yes, so that's a eight thirty G.
So, something like that could be enabled by your new floating zone. I think the other element comes, if it's not, if the market isn't meeting that need, is there. You know, other ways that the town could, um, incentivize it, whether that be, you know. Lessening developer fees, I know you have, uh, wording around a housing trust fund in your zoning regulations, I don't know if you have any money in that yet. But if that fund starts to accumulate some dollars, um, some towns use that to help, um, provide gap financing for that type of development.
Couldn't your housing authority get more?
I was just gonna say housing authority.
Housing authority, we, we are aware of the planned expansion project, I know it, it's, I think, been on the books for a long time and hasn't had wheels, but certainly.
Next to Flex?
Yeah. They own the land there.
They own the land, yeah, well, I.
Certainly densification of housing authority properties or expansion of those properties can also help meet some of that demand as well. But definitely all things we can look at. So this map is just showing the housing priority areas from your affordable housing plan, we talked about seniors a little bit, so let's, let's stick on them for a little bit. So we've talked about age-restricted development, we've talked about, um, uh, affordable senior housing, um, like we have at the housing authority. We talked about aging in place, are there any other senior housing needs that you see as, um, pressing that, that this plan needs to tackle head on?
The fifty-five and over. Like I said, we don't have that many units.
And those are basically de-tax, primarily de-tax, single-family units.
And do these.
Sustained.
Do these opportunity areas from the affordable housing plan reflect where that type of development should be concentrated?
No, because that's.
You see them in your residential areas and, you know, like a three or five acre piece of property, maybe, you know, along one of your more collector roads.
So they could be on the periphery?
Yeah, like on Pleasant Valley Road, we've seen them, we've seen them on Ellington.
Strong.
We've seen them on Strong.
It's like more, more like a cluster subdivision type of.
Yeah, the cluster, yeah, kind of like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Correct.
And but they're limited to twenty-five, uh, units.
Okay.
So they're kind of an infill kind of cluster.
Okay.
Um, and there's some areas in Pleasant Valley where, you know, we've done a couple of them that we've been like eight or, you know, they're not always twenty-five units either, they.
Okay.
They don't have to be detached, they can be attached.
Okay.
Did the, the history of them is the first ones that were built were Porter's Share, right over there off of Oakland and Deming. And they were attached, and they sold for about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And everybody loved them because it was a nice income for people to be able to afford. And then they got popular, and then they went through the roof. It just escalated from there, unfortunately. So it was a nice concept originally, but it just, but now there's an affordability component in it, so they will have to have some, some affordable units in there. You know, the, the other type of independent living, we do have another independent living in Evergreen Walk that is gonna be, um, coming forward, that has a hundred and forty units. It's kind of, jet, has a general plan approval on it, so that's, you talk about fifty-five and older, that's what that would be geared towards. It won't be as intense as Evergreen Crossing is, which is very much your hotel-style independent living. It's gonna be a little bit more of the worker independent living, so I think we still have that to come forward. My understanding that's still on the books.
And, um, another housing or demographic group or, or population group that, um, we, we've heard from a lot over the course of doing affordable housing plans on the community is, um. Disabled housing, often that gets lumped in to your housing authority where it's senior slash disabled, and so. The needs of seniors and disabled people, there might be some overlap, but there may be, um. Some different needs among those, that group, and the waiting list for disabled units is also very high. Um, so I know some, um, towns are proactively looking at, um, what's called universal design. So it's saying, any unit we build, we should try to design it in a way that can accommodate someone with disabilities. Um, or a senior, at least have some units that are, um, that can accommodate those people. And have it be indistinguishable from regular housing, but through some thoughtful layout, um, and materials. And be more functional and, and make it, uh, more walk-up to someone with disabilities.
People, I mean, obviously there are people who are disabled for almost their entire life, but. Mostly people become disabled at some point, they're already living somewhere and they suddenly become disabled. And my idea would be, can they stay? Um, where they are, um, when they become disabled.
And, and that may be a group as well where proximity to services probably matters a little bit more. Um, where you haven't wanna be on a bus line or have access to paratransit or, um, sidewalks and the like.
And is there a place on this page or in this, uh, document for our mobile home parks? Taking no advantage of converting some of the units to affordable as they may become available? I don't know how these even operate.
Well, it's a park that's owned, a single entity owner, right? So, so it's a rental park.
Are there two in South Windsor?
There's two, yeah, I believe they're both owned the same way that someone owns and then the unit.
Owns the whole thing and then they rent the units.
I didn't even know we had any, where, where are they?
There's a way in the down main street, right?
Towards East Hartford.
Oh, oh, oh.
Right little package store there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a gateway.
I picked up a guy there.
Yeah, my husband's done Meals on Wheels in, in their group, so.
You, you know, there may be some opportunity in the future if ownership changes and that kind of thing, so you know, if we win and if this housing committee gets going, you know. There might be something for a housing committee to investigate.
To reach out and offer whatever.
Because I know you can get housing affordable credits for that stuff, but I think you'd have to get it de-restricted.
Okay.
You know, um, the housing committee. We heard some issues about maintenance and, and, uh.
That would be another place for, to go to the housing committee.
The housing committee, those people go there.
Yeah, I actually filed up with the town manager after our public hearing and mentioned to him that, you know, really you guys aren't the place for those kinds of issues. But we did both agree that the housing committee could be a potential, at least, place to at least have a dialogue.
And as Carolyn mentioned, at, after the last meeting to me. It would be good if we point, had a, an avenue to point people to.
Yeah.
And if it's not the housing committee, maybe it's the Board of Health. Um, but.
Yeah.
Have some knowledge of, you know, rather than just sitting there me twiddling my thumbs or something, you know?
Yeah.
And is this, is this gonna be a committee of other commissions that ha, are housing policy-related, or is it completely separate?
It's going to be, it's actually gonna serve two purposes, it's a fair housing committee that you have to do by law. And then it's also gonna have a component of affordable housing and promotion of affordable housing.
Will someone from P Z C be on it? Okay, so it's kinda like your open space.
Yeah, similar kind of, yeah, yeah, so, human services, you, you know, it's a makeup of like eight or ten people, something like that. But it hasn't been appointed yet, it's all council made a resolution, or made a ordinance, but nobody's been seated yet.
Yeah, we got one coming up.
But we're getting there.
Alright, so we're gonna move right through our kind of different groupings here, we have our low-income households, you have an affordable housing plan that. I think we just use as our guide, obviously we don't want this plan to be in conflict, it's still a recent document. And I think that plan, this plan should largely be supportive of, um, the goals and strategies that are in your affordable housing plan. If there's certain areas that you wanna maybe refine or add to, um, certainly the P O C D could, um, could be the vehicle to do that. Until you make your next plan update in twenty twenty-six. I think there's a lot of overlap between, um. Our seniors and our low-income households in terms of housing needs, smaller units, um, access to services, uh, proximity to services. The affordable housing plan, again, prioritized, um, these areas. Um, it sounds like we may wanna investigate those a little differently for different housing types, or maybe some opportunities for other areas. Especially now that you have inclusionary zoning, um, where, you know, perhaps if you have a project that's outside of these opportunity areas that. May have an affordable component as well. Let me just skip families, cause I, I'll, I'll do them last. Single people, um. Again, they're largely, they need smaller housing units, um, and I think reflects some of the developments you've seen, uh, that are apartments in Evergreen Walk being a great example. Obviously, lower-income, single people have similar needs as the other low-income households where they're looking for an affordable, smaller unit. That your inclusionary regulations hopefully can help provide. And again, I, I think. Our, we have several groups that kind of have overlapping housing needs where we're looking at smaller units, multi-family or cluster type developments. Where, um, you're providing a greater number, or greater density, greater number of units. And that leaves families, which, you know, I think has always been, you know, you've always been a tra, a town's been attractive to families because of your. Services, your schools, your access to parks and recreation opportunities. But we're at quite an interesting time in terms of your ability to accommodate many more new families, um, and. The, the primary, you know, draws or housing types for those families are, obviously are traditional single-family subdivisions, but also condominiums and townhomes. Like we saw with South Windsor Woods where, um, a lot more families, uh, ended up living in those units, I think, than you have traditionally seen in some of your other townhome and condominium developments. And so, what should the, uh, philosophy or strategy be around. Um, providing housing needs for families, cause there's clearly demand to move to South Windsor, is it, sorry, there's no room in our schools? We're gonna try to slow things down?
Kick these old guys out of their houses, right?
Hey, we're living in place.
They're in duplexes.
That, that's certainly an option, making duplexes. And to your point that you're right, if we provide housing units for some of these other groups, is that naturally gonna open up more single-family units to families? So, it's almost a, it's almost a, um, a churn in your, in your housing stock. So I, I, I like that thought actually, because it's almost like you're accomplishing the need for more single-family homes without necessarily having to build a new subdivision.
Well, it, it, it's kind of an interesting issue, um. There's a lot of ways to look at it, and one way to look at it would be. Uh, to maintain scarcity. Because if this is serving the needs of a, of this town, twenty-five thousand people. We all want our houses to maintain their value, right? So, maintaining a certain level of scarcity would help do that.
But wouldn't meet your affordability goals very well?
No, it would do the opposite, it would.
Speaking of affordability, Michelle, have we had any accessory dwelling permits requested since that?
Um, I actually have more interest in that, I've given that regulation out to a number of people.
Okay.
And we've had a couple, you know, you had a lot of in-law apartments that converted themselves to an accessory apartment that became permanent, I don't know the exact number, but. Um, that's a regular discussion we have upstairs.
Cause it's, I know it's only one at a time, but, you know, if people took advantage.
Um, some interest in.
Yeah, but those wouldn't help us with our affordability at all.
No, but this is not just an affordability conversation, right?
It's about creating new housing units, yes, creating opportunities, yeah.
Better than building one on a piece of farmland, for example.
We're, we're doing a poll on the Planner's List Serb, which is where all of us hang out, uh, uh, when we're at our day job. Asking the communities who've had accessory apartment regulations on the books for a while, what type of units they've seen, and. Very few have seen any detached units at all.
Really?
Because the cost is significantly higher, um, so.
Yeah, we don't seem to.
To hook into like the utilities, that whole.
Just even borrowing a, you know, a foundation, it's, you know, it's, the cost is, is significant. And so a lot of communities who have had it on the books. And so a lot of communities who have had it on the books have said, yep, we've had either attached or adaptive reuse where it's like, yep, I had a, you know, a barn or something like that or.
Fortunately, the conversations I'm having about subdivisions right now are very few. But the ones I'm having are with some people who have plots of land that don't really wanna, maybe wanna get a couple of units off of it, but not really what the plot could yield, right? So, which is good for us if, you know, they come in and make some five acre horse farms or whatever they might wanna do. But, you know, we, we shouldn't kid ourselves that there's not land out there to develop into single family homes because there is. So I think that, that, you know, one of the things I think hasn't really been happening on we haven't been aggressive enough with our open space purchases, really, along the main street corridor or, or getting development rights. I mean, I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive along those lines. We have money. We have bonded money for those kinds of things. Because I think you're, you know, that's the area that I find is the biggest.
Who drives that? I mean, until somebody comes home?
You know, someone has to wanna sell it to us or whatever, but I mean, the town could make a more active approach. You know, and, and other things too is we used, part of the discussion of the four ninety, you know, we used to send out letters to farmers and say, hey, do you wanna put your land in four ninety where they can get a tax break? You know, that kinda thing that was done through the agricultural commission. So I, I just think that, you know, right now, nobody's looking to build along Main Street, but you know, there's some and, and I'm always happy when someone comes in and talks to me about a property that cuts off a road from going in. You know, cause there's some key pieces that if you can get those tied up, you, you've missed the road pattern, you know?
Four ninety is ten or more acres?
Ten or more acres, but we can do something through our plan of conservation development for open space. So in other words, I know someone that bought eight acres because they wanted to keep it out of development. But they'd love to get a tax break on not doing anything with that eight acres of open space that they have.
So the state defines, defines certain categories, but they also give you what's called the local option, which you'd have to adopt via ordinance, which would then give you guys discretion of granting parcels that meet certain criteria of less than ten acres, the ability to get four ninety status.
So that could be something that is a recommendation for our implementation plan, correct?
Yeah, cause our assessor would love to be able to offer that to people, but we don't have them, we don't have the structure in place to be able to do that. So it might be a way to keep people, rather than selling it off to a developer, just keeping it in the family for longer. Yeah, yeah, rather than the, the desire to sell it.
So the ordinance is.
Which line do you have in town?
By town council, right?
I believe it would need to be known by town.
But we do it already for farming and we do it for forests and those are through state programs. So this would just be another avenue through open space. You don't have to be classified a certain way. I mean, we'd have the assessor, you know, work with us on doing it correctly. I think your P O C D has to support it first.
Yeah, who would support your garden and your backyard, Steve?
It, I mean, it sounds good, but it, the vicious circle is, that's to the school system, right?
No, if it's like.
We're keeping it out of development, so we're keeping.
Keeping it out of development. The urge for them to sell it off to a developer so that they can, you know, cause they're getting taxed on it right now. Whether it be open space or whatever, you still.
So if it's a piece of property that can yield four or five houses, you can get a pretty good sized tax bill on that versus one that's put into a tax relief program. Being kept open space for ten years or something like that.
So, so is that the general consensus of this commission that the strategy should be to leverage the open space fund dollars to discourage single family subdivisions from particular areas that can be defined a little later in the process? As a growth management strategy?
Might not be discourage, but identify, might be a better word, but I think it should be. Because if, if it's an opportunity and we're not.
Especially our farm, you know, farmland, which is so important to us in our community.
It's a survey box.
Absolutely.
There, there's certain areas of our town that really have value that we should try to.
Yeah, cause right now I'm on open space task force and we're not getting anybody coming to us and saying, hey, we're interested in selling our land to the town, you know?
And it may be a case where we're having that proactive approaches to your benefit, because if someone's coming to you, it probably means they have an offer from, from someone already. That may be more than the market value that your, your policy, I know a lot of towns, they dictate you have to get the assessment and you won't pay more than the assessment. So I think the proactive approach may, might help achieve that.
Well, and, and that's something I don't wanna get into the weeds here, but not paying more than the assessment is really a guideline. I believe we can pay more.
And you actually did for the sledding hill, for example.
Yeah, but if we.
It was very important to us. It was their prime property to get.
If we refuse to pay more, a developer will pay more. A developer will pay twice what it's worth, because they, they'll section it up and, you know, get a little bit back with each house, you know?
Yeah, the Zen Tree Farms example, we couldn't pay what they wanted, so we did not get the Zen Tree Farm land. That was one of the ones that was just.
How big was that?
Well, we end up with seventy two unit houses up there, so it was a significant property. We got a lot of open space off of it, you know?
Yeah, we got our pond.
We got pond and whatnot, but we did get seventy two units.
Because there's gonna be demand for single family homes in South Windsor. We may be able to meet some of that demand with the churn. Is there anything that you as a commission would do to better steer single family development in terms of what you get? And for example, is, should there be greater focus on open space subdivisions? Townwide? Would you be willing to have smaller lots? If a larger percentage of the land was maintained as open space?
That's one of the things we hashed over in our committee meeting. And I don't know if we could come to a consensus on that.
So, so I guess how I would say you could maybe get there is, is we, we made our multifamily down to a five acre. So you could get a five acre piece and come up with creative. But it would be a private development where you could come up with small units and do something along those lines. Our, our DRZ, which we did not put back in the regulations, is kind of that concept where we're creating small. I mean, we don't call them subdivisions, but the rest of the world does.
What's your?
Cause they give them land around the piece of property, so it really is felt.
What's your open space requirement for traditional subdivision? Okay, it is fifty percent. And does that include constrained land or no?
Um, there's a formula, but. And, and now you can't, any lot you create, you have to take the wetlands out of the, the, you know. So we, with our latest update, we are creating better lots, if you will. And with less restrictions on them, reinforcements and things. So I think, and we haven't seen anything come in with those new regulations, so you may find it yield.
Got it. So the open space was increased as part of your subdivision?
Well, it increased some of the criteria. The fifty percent's been there for a while, but we increased some of the things that will create lots that won't will yield a little better lots than we've been getting. So to your question, I think we can get to these smaller lots through our multifamily if someone wants to do that, you know what I mean? And, you know, when we're ready for more single families close together, maybe we'll put the DRZ back in. But I think right now it's, it's a hard one to support with the housing situation. Schools, cause they do generate school fees.
I wanna talk about housing in each of these three opportunity areas when we get into the business development section, because I think it's just more, a more of a global conversation.
Okay, I don't wanna fall behind. Thank you.
The business development was, I thought, the most interesting inception change between ten years ago and today, where the survey ten years ago, increasing business development was the number one priority, and now it's the last priority. So certainly, I think it's, there's some anxiety over the type of development and the impact it's had on the surrounding.
I think you're saying, I think maybe you're seeing the reaction to all the warehouses.
Certainly.
And the loss of farmland, which, yeah.
And this commission has done too good of a job.
So we have our business zones that again follow those corridors that we saw in the community's structured plans. So Route Five being more industry and employment focused. Sullivan Avenue and Buckland Road in town center being more retail and services focused. And so we wanted to kinda frame the conversation around development, be kind of forward thinking around two trends that I think are gonna shape your business districts, particularly the retail and services districts over the next ten years. So first is e-commerce. E-commerce is here to stay. Right now, it's about fifteen percent of, of total sales. That projected to increase to twenty one percent by twenty twenty seven. And we're gonna continue to see this impacting certain sectors more than others. So clothing and apparel, electronics, books and music, all things that many of us buy online today. And those are gonna continue to be the least resilient to e-commerce. But then there's gonna continue to be opportunities for businesses that need that physical presence. So restaurants, food and beverage stores, your barber, nail salon, automotive uses, fitness and recreation, et cetera. And I thought that what was interesting is that we asked a question in the survey about online shopping. And survey respondents do, on average, forty percent of their shopping online. Doesn't necessarily follow the same formula as the first bullet. It might be, you know, forty percent of the time they shop online. It might not be a dollar amount. But I thought that was pretty staggering. And again, it largely reflects demand for, for housing and distribution facilities. That demand comes from somewhere and it comes from more people engaging in e-commerce.
Did, did the survey separate out food?
It did not. It was just general.
Forty percent, the assumption is that's like retail goods?
Yep.
I assume the number ten years ago for e-commerce was below, way below forty percent. So I assume it is a growing.
We didn't even ask the question, cause it probably wasn't even relevant.
That answers my question, yeah.
And I think, you know, like a lot of trends, you know, that were happening in, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen period, the pandemic really just accelerated what was already happening. And so the increase, you know, was going up at a good clip. And then we made a, a pretty big jump in twenty twenty. Remote work is also a trend that we see impacting South Windsor. You guys are fortunate in that you're not reliant on, you know, big class A office space like some of your peer towns. Simsbury being a good example, Middletown where they had large corporate offices that, you know, housed insurance industry employees. Those were both demolished in both cases and redeveloped. So you guys are lucky that you don't have those assets here. But nevertheless, you do have many smaller offices that have workers that may be going remote or hybrid. And so according to the latest data I could find, twelve percent of workers are now full-time remote. And another twenty eight percent work a hybrid model. And so demand for certain types of office spaces is going to also be lower than it was during your last plan. A place like downtown Hartford, I think is gonna struggle a lot more than South Windsor. But there may be particular properties or office buildings where.
So your picture at the bottom kinda reflects the office of the future for small, you know, attorneys. My daughter is an attorney, has a single practice. She rents space in one of these places and it's really high end. I mean, they have all the copying machines, they have parties, I mean.
Yeah, it's a, it's a co-working space. And one of the things that we, we did like an internal workshop to start consultant team is, you know, do you consider co-working space as part of community facilities investments? If you're building a recreation center, do you add in some of these co-working spaces that could better support that home population or the library? Many towns are creating these little spaces in their libraries where you can reserve a meeting room to do personal business, or they'll have a business center with printing. So I think that will tie into our community facilities conversation at our next meeting.
What about in an apartment development? Look over at Evergreen Walk, they ought to put a co-working space either in there or near there.
Maybe a purpose, but. There's a little lot right there I can suggest it to them. Next to the daycare, there's a little area that still needs an office to go in.
Great idea.
And this is kind of our summary of what we see as impacts for South Windsor. So in light of e-commerce and remote work, we see lower demand for brick and mortar retail in South Windsor. We also see lower demand for office space excluding medical office, which is gonna continue to need that physical presence. And I think a lot of people in their mindset, the business zones have always been for business. And I'll kinda pose a, a question for you all for discussion tonight of what if there's not enough demand to fill all the land in the business zone with businesses? How do we continue to plan for vibrant districts? And is the commission interested in maybe revisiting the land use mix in some of your business districts? I think you've seen this in Evergreen Walk, that your business districts are gonna continue to evolve as, as they as they encounter some of these challenges. I thought one of the more interesting examples was the Goddard School in Evergreen Walk. I think it used to be a restaurant and a retail store, and now it's a daycare center. And so that's, I think, a perfect example of some of the shifts we're seeing in the marketplace. Your community with growing school age children, you have a demand for daycare facilities. There's gonna be this continued shift towards non-retail uses, daycare again being a, a great example. And some spaces may become obsolete. And I think your, your Evergreen walks are gonna be more resilient just because of the density of, of different uses is always good, and traffic is always gonna be attractive to businesses. But you may see some older commercial developments that are struggling to adapt their spaces to meet some of these emerging trends. And so that, that, I think, becomes a question for you as a commission of how can we best repurpose those uses and spaces to meet the objectives of your plan?
Where are we seeing this? I mean, I know, but other than Evergreen Walk, I mean, where are we seeing? Cause we've actually had people come in and wanna propose more retail, strip mall kinda places on Sullivan Avenue, but I haven't seen it actually getting built, you know?
And where are those businesses gonna come from? I think is the other question of, you can always, there's limited, there's finite demand for retail and services. There's, there may always be demand for some new construction, but often that's gonna then shift tenants from one development to another. And then you get into, I, I think another good example is the Parkade in Manchester. Once you build Buckland Hills, you don't get the Parkade and Buckland Hills. All those stores moved to Buckland and now you're stuck with an older development that can't compete. And so how do you reposition that? And so again, I think there is room for some retail development in South Windsor, but it may tug at another area. And force you to, you know, reposition a, a, a commercial use elsewhere.
Well, that's like our, if you might call it the Geisler Plaza. I mean, that's looking like it could be a lot of retail there. And I think that's similar to the example you just gave, so.
But I think it's an example of what could happen to centers that don't remain vibrant. I mean, it happened to this center twenty five years ago, right? So, you know, if you don't have your anchor store, for example, your anchor leaves on a center, what happens to your center?
And so we'll kinda go through each of the three retail services districts, but I kinda threw out three philosophies. Origin from kind of our big, you know, dream made, let's, let's completely change the way we think about our business districts. So I'll call that our reimagine, so which is informative, let's focus on business. And kind of a proactive approach to how these could be. We have adapt, which is kind of our middle ground, which is our gradual change, which is, you know, we're gonna reposition obsolete uses on an as needed basis, but maybe do it a little bit more carefully and deliberately. And then there's maintain, which is, let's keep doing what we're doing. Let's maintain a business focus and cross our fingers and hope that there's gonna be enough businesses to keep these districts.
I mean, the decision to do one of these three things is really the, the businesses themselves. What we have to decide is how are we gonna facilitate what we wanna see happen? How do we facilitate, you know, adapting, I think we're actually kind of allowing. We struggle a little bit with Evergreen or the Buckland Gateway Zone because there's a vision for that. And we struggle with changing that vision. But we are, I think, adapting more than anything with that. What would we do differently in our zoning and our other policies to you know, reimagine a place? Maybe, I, I don't think I wanna reimagine Evergreen Walk, but reimagine some of the other areas in town. What do we, what do we need to do to facilitate that as a, as a policy body?
Again, I think Evergreen is, and Buckland Road, the southern part, south of town center is, it has the best characteristics in terms of maintaining that commercial focus. Certainly, I think there's demand for housing too, but. Certainly, I think there's demand for housing too, but of all three of those districts, I think this one has the greatest opportunity to kind of maintain that commercial center of gravity. So any other thoughts on kind of where you guys stand on these three options, are we kind of, so Steve's in the adapt of, you know, let's kind of look at things slowly, and to your point, like you said, zoning and policies being your main driver, private developments. Property owner's going to have to be responsive to any of these strategies, how how do others feel?
I I have a little different take on this, I mean, I see it as proactive versus reactive, and here's what I mean. I mean, our role is a- applications come to us and we discuss them and vote on them. They come to us, there's no proactivity with that. The disconnect for me is um as far as I can see, this town doesn't have a real strong economic development component. They exist, but I don't know that they really do anything, so if we were to sit here and say, wow, reimagine is the way to go, how do we, how do we impact that?
I think it would center around housing, which is the most in-demand other use that's allowed, at least in some parts of that area. Are you, as a commission, happy with the way that your regulations are set up, where you have some allowances for mixed use? Are you, will there, could there be a time where there's certain lots that just aren't being developed, where you consider allowing more residential than you currently can under current zoning? Again, it's not necessarily an answer that you have to have tonight, but just kind of a philosophical.
I see what you're saying.
So I'm going to give you just a perspective of my looking back at the last ten years. So I've kind of always seen you guys as adapting more than anything else to the changes in the Buckland Gateway Zone. Because, you know, what it was imagined in two thousand and one and what is today is is different, right? And it's because things changed, the markets changed, demands have changed and whatever. So you, we haven't gone to the point of totally reimagining that whole area there, because I think the basic premise of the Evergreen Walk is still the same. But you certainly have adapted as housing became a bigger issue and other uses like the drive, I mean, so I see you guys clearly in this particular quarter have gone through a a lot of adoptions, and and then when people approach me about things in this particular zone that you don't allow or whatever, you know, that's when they come in you for preliminary basis, if it's something that you want. The reimagine part of it, quite frankly scares me for this area, because you'd have more housing than you'd know what to do it, because I think that's I mean, majority of calls I get are people want to do housing in now. So I just think that that the the housing part of it, especially in light of where we are with our our facilities, you know, our capacities, is it something that we, you just got to be, give some thought to in this area, for sure.
Yeah, you're hitting different areas, jumping ahead. For Buckland Road, Evergreen Walk, I'm kind of, I think the same mentality as Steve, adapt. That's just where I'm at.
And.
Town Center, on the other hand, we did a reimagine, I think.
We need to push it. We just have, well, it's it's a redevelopment plan, to be honest, it's a redevelopment plan, so it's not there yet.
I don't know, I I'm in between adapt and reimagine, I'm not willing to go to to one box or the other, I think they can work interchangeably, and I I I say that because, you know, our tool to have a proactive approach is through PZC-sponsored text amendments, which is for us a great tool to say, hey, let's do this instead if we want to encourage A type of development, or B or C, and so on and so forth. I could see in, how do I put it, I'd rather not sit on our hands, and in fifty years, Evergreen Walk turns into what the Parkade was. So I mean, that that's my concern, if there is demand, let's do it in a smart manner, and that's why I'm more of the adapt category, because let's not just rezone everything anticipating change, rather, let's say, if we know this is going to change, if we know that this demand is going to occur in X amount of years, then yeah, I'd ha- I'd more have a an adaptive reaction, but of course, my thought is, you know, we always have to be proactive and adapt to what's in front of us, so I I I'd use those two interchangeably. And then, once we do reimagine and adapt, then I'd be able to say, okay, let's maintain it for five to ten years and reassess from there. So I mean, I could use all three of those interchangeably.
My feeling is um that Buckland Road, Evergreen Walk is 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 cooking, I mean, it's hitting on all cylinders. So I would not do reimagine, because if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I'm probably at adapt with a little tiny bit of maintain, because if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
And that's the motto that the Parkade had, so that that's sort of where I'm coming from as well, I'm, I I just don't want to be too cautious and too i- if if we get too used to and comfortable with what we have, we may end up where uh there may be new developments down the line in other towns, and Manchester may have a good thriving comeback in that area, and you know, we may lose out if we're not, you know, keeping up with the times.
That'll be our next plan of conservation and development.
And and there's a lot of development that's been approved on on Buckland Road that just hasn't started to, you know, come forward. So, once that all comes in, would we feel differently? Because now we're really, you know, lined up. That one big parcel though by Joanne Faber.
You have that, and then you have the Crosskey piece, which is another one that doesn't, it's not a huge piece, but it is a piece that.
Yeah. Didn't Metro want that when he gave, when he passed away?
Okay.
I thought they had said they would uh, no, Met- Metro hasn't come forward for Crosskey?
Uh, no, not so, no. It's, as far as I know, it's still being marketed, I I get housing calls on it.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Any other thoughts on Buckland and Evergreen before we move on to Sullivan Ave?
What's your feeling of?
Do I have to pick a box?
Well, it's, we're trying to come to some consensus.
The road girl, so adapt.
I think that makes sense, that your, of all your corridors, it's going to have the strongest demand for commercial use, so why not reserve the land you have for commercial uses, because as soon as it gets redeveloped, it's not commercial use, there's no undue bond. So I I definitely, I I definitely can see how the adapt makes sense, and then if there's a particular piece of land or a rear lot or something, I think it gives you some flexibility to how to look at things or um respond.
Okay, we still have more of these.
Or do you give a time you you want us to?
No, I just thought we're like an hour and a half.
Yeah, does nine o'clock, if we shoot for no later than nine, does that work?
It's fine with me.
That's what Michelle said, two hours.
So and I think a lot of the, you know, the first one was hard, so I think Sullivan Ave is going to be a lot of the same philosophy. It's it's a different, it's a different location though, right? You have lower traffic, you're not part of that regional node, you have a much more.
Lower traffic, why don't you bet last been on Sullivan, two lane, it's only two lanes, man.
More of a community focus, so you're not drawn in, you're Manchester shoppers the same way. And you you've all kind of looked at the Geisler's redevelopment proposal, um which is, I think, a great example of an adapt, right? Is is that kind of the philosophy you you would take for the corridor as a whole? Would you be willing to be on the more reimagine side, more focused on housing, or potentially as a, you know, a bridge between your industrial and your uh more commercial areas? Is it, if if you had a manufacturer come in and wanted a a site in town, there was none available, but there was something on Sullivan Ave, could that potentially work as well?
Well, part of Sullivan Avenue is.
Yeah, there's really two different streets, there's an industrial section, and there's a.
Let's focus on the commercial zone.
Okay.
So really, the commercial comes from about where Dairy Queen is towards Town Hall.
Well, with, with the brewery too, right?
Correct, the brewery, yeah, there's there's a gap, right, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, so it's really Troy Road and coming back, right?
Oh, we have a hard hard of uses over there.
Eclectic mix.
I feel like the Sullivan area, or Sullivan Avenue area, uh more in the leaning a little bit more than I was last time towards towards reimagine, but really because we're already reimagining that area. You know, within one application there, and I think we, you know, we've had discussions in the past of what that area may look like in the other plaza across the street. There's uh one other drive-through facility being put there, and there's another plaza there that's a little bit older that may come back and renovate that in the next ten years, so I I I'd I'd put it in the reimagine area, and I also say that with the fact that, you know, with traffic, if traffic and, or I'm not excited, if, when traffic increases in that Sullivan Ayers area, I don't know, maybe one day the town says, maybe we should put a roundabout in that area, there's enough room for it. So I'd also, and again, a little way from the the commercial aspect from from that, but I I guess in that area in total, you know, I I'd be a little bit more on reimagine, but because we're already doing that, so.
And you still have areas like, you know, the townstone's that piece next to the brewery, that that's a commercial piece. Um across the street, you have commercial, you have that piece that they play soccer on, that's general commercial, so you still have commercial vacant land in that general area that is not, it's general commercial, which really is, you know, pretty flexible as far as the.
Can you do light industry there or no?
No.
Okay.
So that, and and that's one that, you know, that kind of is a question. I mean, you're getting down towards your industrial part of the Route Five.
Is it an area for perhaps a transition overlay like you have in Route Five?
I don't know, that might be something you want to think about.
So so this area is basically Dairy Queen to Four Corners.
No, it's actually further down than that, so you have the brewery to Four Corners.
The brewery to Four Corners, so we have Geisler that's going to get fixed, quote unquote. We have a restaurant that's coming in.
But it's, it's really not.
Fair amount of housing in there, right?
Well, because the town center is a separate one, right? Town center is a separate entity, so we're really just talking the Geisler's corridor, right?
If we look at this map here, here's.
Yeah, that that area right there in pink. If, Alan, if we did something across the street, I think it would be more adapt as we did with Geisler's. I don't think we would have to do something specific just for that. You know, as far as going reimagine. Um I'd be more in favor of adapt.
I would agree, because it feels like it's, you know, whatever issues are there are are getting resolved organically, and it doesn't feel to me like an area where I want to create housing. So I would agree with adapt.
Yeah, I only said reimagine, because on our housing needs map, that area was included in it, so I just assumed that that's sort of what we were expecting, so I I'm I'm fine with either adapt or reimagine, but.
Well, I think we're all struggling with the we know we need more housing, and we know we got schools that are chock full, okay?
Yeah.
I guess one thing that would be very interesting is to come back and look at the demographic predictions for the schools. I mean, are the schools going to be full to the gills and building portable classrooms in five years, or are they going to be much more comfortable? Do we, do we have room? To build more housing without really, you know, without really stressing the schools?
Do we usually get a report from Board of Ed in October regarding?
November.
He's the one that does it, so yeah.
Oh, okay.
And even looking at the last one, I forget what it was telling us, there were, there are these peaks that move through.
Recent trend was your growth in your elementary is slowing, but all those big grades are now moving into your middle and high school. We'll, I'll certainly share that update with you all once we finish it uh in November for the board. But our our general trend was unless like, unless there's some, you know, rapid development of housing that is out of the the rate of housing that you've built in the recent past, you're going to reach a point, a saturation point where your your housing just can't accommodate any more kids, because anyone that has wanted to move into the community has already moved in, and the people that are going to be selling have school kids, and it'll be a net change, so. The growth, the high enrollment, I think we're anticipating is going to stay, but the level of growth that you saw can't continue forever, so.
It depends, you build more units.
If you build more though, you're right, it's, it all depends on, I think, unit type.
Yeah.
What we found in South Windsor, and and, you know, if you asked me to estimate the impact of a South Windsor Woods before it was built, I probably wouldn't have anticipated the amount of kids that are going to come out of it. But an Evergreen Walk, for example, the number of students coming out of there is pretty on par with what we've seen in, you know, similar similar projects in Simsbury or Farmington. So I think the unit type.
Where, for Evergreen Walk?
Yeah, not a lot of students per unit are coming out of Evergreen.
We got more than we were told we were going to get.
Tempo, this Tempo?
Tempo.
I think we had like thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we were told fifteen.
Yeah, Tempo is about average of what we've seen in comparable projects. But Evergreen Walk, I think, is, or excuse me, uh, South Windsor Woods is is certainly.
An anomaly.
An anomaly.
It's a different kind of housing.
It is.
We didn't recognize that, I think. I mean, it's really more like single-family housing.
The condominiums, and you know, it's kind of.
And so it becomes more of a conversation around the unit type, in addition to, obviously, you you talked about age-restricted housing, maybe it's maybe that has a greater focus, because is a family really going to move to an apartment building where you have to walk through a corridor, and um you don't have your own private entrance or a garage, or um, you know, you have kind of common amenity space? It, does that matter more? I I think in South Windsor, it probably does.
So if one of the design regulations don't encourage housing, that's more about that.
Well.
No, I, I know.
What is the kind of housing, I mean, the demand is, you know, let let's say, people who work here or people who work around here, uh what are they going to want to move into, you know? And and what is the demand, and do we want to meet that demand, or do we want to kind of say, well, we'll do senior housing because they don't bring kids, we'll do, I don't know, apartments, single-bedroom apartments, because they don't bring that many kids, or, you know, I mean, do we know what we need? Kind of look at what kind of, what's the housing demand, what type of units, and then what can we allow in order not to have to build another school?
Well, just hypothetically, if we uh increase senior housing, like S R Ds, whatever, and that creates some turnover, that turnover isn't any one specific area. It's wherever the people are that move out, so it would be more of a influx across town rather than focus on one particular school. Uh I think that would be more palatable.
Makes sense.
If uh we went in that direction.
Good point.
Most people aren't all going to come from South Windsor either. They're going to, you know, people move to Seaberry and they move to Dunkster, out of, you know, among our friends, and those are in other towns.
Yeah.
So people be moving into them from other towns, so I think it's probably not a zero-sum game there.
Right, yep.
But I think, you know, in terms of providing housing for the region, I think in in some way we could say we've done our job. We've got the school clearly packed full, we've built the schools, uh and and maybe we could say, oh, well, we've we've made our contribution to the region, and this is with respect to single-family housing and and school-aged children, um but maybe we need to focus on contributing to the region in other areas.
Yeah, but crazy about we've done our job and packed the school or something.
But you know, in reality, you you could sit here and count the number of units that are in your future, just by what you've already proved through general plans.
Right.
And we're almost at what you did over the last ten years in housing units, so um creating, you know, I I think we don't have to have a goal of creating a lot more units, because you've got a lot more that's going to come in the next five years, just again by what's in the books.
And the new development wasn't the driver of the increasing student enrollment.
Any, any new development will create, any new residential development will create more school kids. It doesn't matter, you know, it, oh, it's apartments, you know, only create this amount, but if you have two hundred of them, you're gonna get as many as you would have had if you had this many houses, so it's all relative.
Can can you elaborate on what you just said?
Well, okay, so you have Geisler's, if this ever gets to where it's, that's a hundred and twenty-five units.
Okay.
You have fifty-five in metro, really, you just approve the zone change for.
Okay.
You have a hundred and sixty-five that you have a site plan for next week in Evergreen Walk.
Tempo three?
Tempo, or whatever you want to call it. You have a hundred and forty units. You have a hundred and forty units in an independent living that you've approved the general plan for. So what am I up to? Four hundred and?
Four thousand.
Five, one seventy.
Four and four hundred and fifty.
But the majority of those are already in the school plans or?
Well, he knows about them, because I tell him about them, right, so he's factored them into his numbers of projections go, but. You know, when we just saw a chart that said between two thousand thirteen and twenty twenty-three, you did five hundred housing units of multifamily or something?
Half a multifamily, yeah.
I just gave you four hundred and something that are multifamily and I didn't count the thirty thirty units over at the um, my main street there, thirty-two units there. High bay, so.
All right, I'm gonna wrangle this back in, cause we have half. All right, so what my my general takeaway is we're in the adapt category, maybe this isn't as high of a priority area for housing, just given the. Distance from other stuff, but maybe certain sites, it works, is the general consensus? I did town center last, cause I I I think this is of that, all the three, the one where maybe we're. Um, a little bit more in the reimagine category, I know last plan you did some reimagining around it. And so I think for town center, it's, you know, we have these three opportunity areas from your affordable housing plan. From what I gathered in our conversation, Evergreen Walk, you all are, you know, uh, let's let's keep commercial focused as much as we can. Sullivan Avenue, maybe there's some sites that work, does town center become then the priority area if you're doing additional housing? Out of those three?
We've already, basically, the overlay zone that we offered uh has a lot of housing in it.
Or potential.
Potential housing, if somebody decides to take advantage of it.
And let me ask a question, so I think right now the center only lets you do mixed use residential over commercial, right?
Well, there's there's a way you could get at it, but it's by the commission agreeing to it, so it's not an answer right that way.
So that, I know, is difficult from a market perspective for a lot of builders.
Because it's a special exception.
And if you have, you're forced to build commercial space that there may or may not be demand for. I think it's the bigger issue that a lot of developers are facing with a true mixed use zone is. Why would I, you know, if there was demand for a mixed use building, I would, they would have proposed it. And so I know a lot of them uh will will look at that and and that might be a turn off.
Well, part of it also is. Mixed use is one thing if you can make it, the numbers work. But the only way, eh, we were originally told, yeah, with. Two floors of housing on top of commercial, we can make the numbers work and then the numbers didn't work. And, you know, maybe it is possibly going more vertical to make the numbers work. But that's something that we would have to decide. But yet we haven't had anybody come forward and say, that won't work without going more vertical.
How do we figure out? We have to re reimagine this thing, because what we did. I mean, unless it's just a matter of, you know, somebody died and, you know, they're still trying to figure out what they're gonna do with the business. Is there any chance that what we did is actually gonna work?
Well, that property just turned over.
That's my point.
Which one?
Like Julie's, Barks and Bubbles, all that was purchased in the last, what, year?
Years, yeah, there there's been some, there's new ownership on that side of the road, yes, so there may be some opportunity for redevelopment over there. To answer your question, so yes. I think that, you know, I think we kinda recognize that we're in it for the long game, the redevelopment of the town center area, and I think that's why we. Kinda put our regulations in place, hoping, but, you know, it's it's always been an open conversation with anybody looking at the town center. If you have any question or conversation about these regulations, come talk to you guys. And nobody's ever been at the point where they're looked at them that seriously yet, but again, I really think that's gonna start to change, because we've had a change in ownership over there. May not happen immediately, because I know they're not planning on things immediately, but there is interest in coming in and sitting down and looking at.
Well, the other variable is if you allow people to. Go and put housing in or multifamily in an area where they don't have to redevelop something that's already there. It saves them, say, a million dollars right off the top. So it's it's much more advantageous to develop an open lot rather than redevelop. That's just economics.
Let me ask the question as kind of a, we'll 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 do multipart here, so are we all in agreement that out of the three commercial areas we discussed, town center? Is most desirable to meet those housing needs out of the three? Is there agreement to that? Yeah, it's possible.
I I think you have the most walkability if you're trying to get to the town, you know, town hall, you're trying to go shopping, or you get on a bus line, you have all those. Mixes right here in the town center, you have your medical offices, so if you're looking at a walkability kind of center. That's what you, the town center is the greatest for that.
There's not a lot of residential in the area, right? So you don't have.
There's not a a ton of land either, to be honest with you, so it's not like you're gonna get a thousand units in the town center.
Most of the land we're talking about across from the gazebo, you know, that. Back there is who, and is that earth soul? Who owns all that?
No, they they sold that.
They did?
But you know where the Mother Goose was, I mean, that's as far as deep as it, how how deep that goes back there, so you have what, eight or ten?
There's a lot of little businesses back there.
One story businesses.
Like what, kick them, I mean.
Either relocate them or.
There's also a lot of discussion about, you know, that tier of stores with the Japanese restaurant and and. Oh, yeah, and the other restaurant.
Stop and shop?
Well, not Stop and Shop itself, but that L was. Uh, I thought when we talked about that, we were talking about that particular row of stores maybe changing the way it looks.
Stores are prudential?
Well, you wrote regulations that allows intensification of the town center, so in other words, you allowed for more coverage, you allowed for. Um, more building essentially to occur there.
Parking lot getting.
Yeah, so with the idea being that, you know, you'd you'd have more people, maybe it's because it's a walkable environment that are, you know, they're either coming by bus or some other means, so. Your regulations, your overlay does allow for an intensification of it, allows buildings to come closer to the road. Again, somewhat of the Mansfield concept of what Mansfield Center did, but some of those kinds of things were were brought in as far as concepts.
So again, the question is, is that something we 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 got in place, we just have to wait for something to happen, or? Is that model not really working and should we be re reimagining it?
I think the vision's still there, right, of you want a mix of housing, town services, commercial uses, I think. But the the latter is, it's not re reimagining, it's the same, I think, outcome, but it's. Maybe making those small tweaks to it, and how do we, are there things we could do that could make it more achievable, would be my take on it?
I mean, that may be something that the the town has to partner with the developer, you know, I mean, there may be some improvements that, you know, we need to look at. Figure whatever, so.
And I think another kind of follow up question, I'm not gonna stop talking about housing, guys, sorry, um, is. We have our two overlay areas, we have our north overlay and our center. Should one of those two areas have a greater focus on residential? So are we saying, you know what, the center, we're gonna just keep the, we're gonna keep the business focus and say, let's push the residential to the periphery? Or is it, we're willing to see housing in both areas, or no, or in either area?
Were there differences in the regulations?
Basically, can do housing without commercial outside of the center, right? But your density is not as great.
In the north central?
Correct.
That's where all those little ranchers are lined up on Sullivan?
That would be the north or, no, actually, they're they're core, they might be core, um, like the the Mitchell piece over here at the corners.
Where you cut that nice tree down, Kevin's always bitching about, I mean, I'm not supposed to bitch.
Their their memories die hard.
Doesn't have to be something we have all the answers to today, but I just figured we'd throw it out there and.
I mean, do we throw things like free's property on that? The town owns that.
Yeah, but that's, but was bought with open space money, you can't, you can't uh. Build on it. You can't build buildings.
I could put a bunch of trailer parks on.
And solar farms.
We'll do them under a T and C.
All right, before we wrap up on Route five, what are we all thinking on in these three boxes, where do you?
Well, I I think we've already um reimagined with the town center. And I I think we should give it a chance to work. I mean, if the developer comes to us and wants to discuss, you know, tweaking or whatever. I think we've always been open to discussions.
So maintain?
Yeah, but maintain doesn't give you guys enough credit, you've already done, you've already done a lot, right?
All right, thank you.
So.
Another adapt?
Well, I think you're really in the reimagine mode still, because you've reimagined it and we're we're waiting for that to kinda happen. So I don't really wanna, you know, go to either one of them yet, cause we haven't given up on our imagination.
Sold.
Okay, so we wanna keep, well, we'll keep kind of the overarching vision from the plan, but we're open to tweaks.
Yeah, and and it may be something that um we task our EDC with, how do you help bring this about? You know, maybe that's in some of our strategies, so.
And I think too, some of the infrastructure improvements you're making helps kinda tie things together there too, so we'll talk about that.
Around the center, you know, different things like that.
Weight binding signage, landscaping, all sorts of other things that are outside of the regularly, you know, what we traditionally think of as in town control. We'll we'll hold up on that till next time, and then we'll wrap up on the Route five corridor. Again, the the kinda framework and um. Community structure of the Route five corridor is really the same as it was in the last plan, but land that was zoned for those industrial uses. Has been developed, and I think that's been kind of the the uh, the issue that's kind of riled up a lot of folks in the community is is the. The scale and the the rate of what's always been a lot of industrial zones. Um, so it remains a regional employment center, it's it's always, it's gonna continue to remain that regional employment center through your manufacturing and. Transportation and warehousing sectors, and e-commerce again is here to stay, and and those businesses. Need that warehousing and distribution space somewhere. Um, and largely the, you know, the prime pieces, I think, are all developed, and you may have some. Smaller properties or redevelopment opportunities, but I don't believe there's a lot of greenfield opportunities in that in that Route five zone anymore, right, Michelle?
No, no, there's really not.
And so I think this plan is gonna be very much a redevelopment focus in the Route five corridor. And the survey actually indicated. The strongest support for business intensification in the Route five corridor compared to all of your other business zones, and. I I take that 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 means Route five proper, and maybe not some of the roads that um go off it where your industrial zones may extend a little bit. But from from what I've been, what I've heard so far, I think there is a a desire for a redevelopment focus, whether that means. Focusing on brownfield redevelopment, the town playing a more active role in grants, um, which a lot of towns do, they kinda serve as that intermediary. Between a state or federal agency and a property owner, where they'll apply, they'll be a pass through entity, and then. Uh, they can apply for money that then the developer can use for cleanup or assessments. And then I think zoning or financial incentives, I think financial probably more so. Uh, you have your tax abatement program, is there um perhaps a recommendation to. Um, create some new priorities around a redevelopment focus, so those money, uh, that that money gets targeted towards. Meeting a land use objective, um, as opposed to going towards a greenfield development. And then um we heard some talk about an EDC or an expanded role of economic development, I think that can also be something that can help facilitate. That redevelopment focus is having, you know, more active recruitment of desirable industrial businesses to your industrial zones, because. Out of all four of the commercial districts we looked at, this is really the only one where that separation of uses makes sense. But how do we as as a as a town make sure that we don't have a proliferation of uses that most negatively impact our. Surrounding neighborhoods. Um, so these are all just kinda thrown out as food for thought, um, I don't know if anyone has anything to share on Route five, or are we kinda. On board with the redevelopment focus, should we change direction? Any thoughts?
Reimagine. Starting with Meztec.
So how many brown, what are the brownfields?
Meztec would be brownfield. You know, one of the things about Route five that's always um been very odd from a zoning perspective is. There are intersections of general, commercial and industrial and where they kind of like butt up against each other and then they don't, and then they do it. They're very um disjointed, uh, you know, you don't have a commercial section, industrial section, you gotta kinda all of those places. And I often wonder, and and we actually had someone almost come in for a tax amendment, if there isn't some use categories that we may. Wanna consider along our Route five corridor, um, someone talked about a service industry category, like where you go and you. It's kind of not really commercial, it's not really industrial, it's kind of a hu- a a hybrid. I mean, we do see that a little bit with our um and equipment sales that we have out there, there are industrial zones, but we allow them as a. So I I just am wondering if we if, and maybe we can look at, you know, the zoning we have and the uses, and there may be some. Some overlay on the Route five we want, might wanna look at, because we have a lot of stuff that was out there by variance, I'll be the first to tell you, a lot of the. The the um car uses out there are in industrial zones by a variance that was granted back in the sixties or the seventies. So we have a lot of uses that don't look like they belong, but they're legal because of some other reason. So it may just be something that we we may want to, in our effort to try to revitalize and and um, you know, encourage Route five development. We may wanna look at our uses there and see if there's some opportunity to open up some other things that, you know, we're we're not really, we're missing.
We have the Brickyard, which is.
So so the Brickyard is fourteen acres of land that, you know, you could take down all those things and develop it, industrial land, I mean, that's on the market, so that's.
There's the uh guy doing all the stuff from the Hartford tunnels, um.
You got that as in lawsuit four twenty, John Fitch, that whole piece is in litigation, you got land behind that, that's um industrially relevant land, so. I mean, you still have opportunity for development, you got the piece, um, the old Dave Karen piece off of Sullivan Ave and Patriot Road. Bunch of acreage in there that they're gonna be putting some cows on, um, but.
Did you say cows?
Cows, yeah, they're gonna raise cows on that right now. So that's being land banked, if you will, because they're not gonna put it into industrial development yet, but again, you do have some vacant land for redevelopment um along Route five.
An area where you've done a lot of work in your regulations to, I think, try to get you.
To adjust the warehouse. Yeah, that kind of stuff, yeah, but just looking at your map there, see where you see the pink, those are general commercial zone land, right? Bulk of it's industrial. But your uses, as you drive up there, you know, you got a lot of commercial uses that are not, I mean, you know, so may, just maybe some flexibility in there.
I like that idea.
More like a hybrid zone.
I mean, it it really is, you you think that um you've got nomads, and this weekend there was a car show there. It it just had this interesting variety of things up and down. That, you you know, maybe we, as you say, try and do things to. Peril proliferate that a little bit.
The look. It's, you know, I I don't know if there's anything we can do to like improve the 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 look of that street.
Well, you 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 did do, in our last plan, we encouraged people to pull up pavement, and you have to pull up some pavement, and we've gotten some green area. Out of the the state right of way with some of your redevelopment of some sites. I think if the state ever were to come in here and put in like a decent guard rail in or something like that, we could change the looks of it, but I mean, this, it's a state road, so unless the state's gonna.
Yeah, but some of the buildings.
But the building, you could have like a facade program, you could have some kind of revolving loan fund where, you know, through your EDC, I wanna approve the front of my building. I go get a loan interest loan and I, I mean, some towns do that, I think we had that in our last plan.
Often times towns will use the Steve grants, are you guys eligible for Steve? And they'll use that to kinda seed the fund, that's that, and it's typically like a matching grant or something. And they'll use that to kind of seed the fund that's that, and it's typically like a matching grant or something like that, of, you know, we'll give you up to a certain amount and you have to kick in a certain amount for facade improvements.
You know, some of those end up being those colored awnings and stuff and then, you know, in ten years,
Yeah.
they're, they shred and it's like, oh, I can't afford to fix that. And it looks like.
But you do have new, but, you know, like the Way Best Chicken site has been purchased and you've seen that one. I don't know if it's been painted and they're slowly upgrading that site. So, you know, as they, some of these older, tired sites sell, you know, you get some new people coming in.
Yeah, but maybe we need some, um, better design criteria or something. To dress up some of these places.
So again, they don't usually get in front of you unless they're changing the use, they're doing something in the exterior that gets them in front of you, but, um.
Well, this is the town's plan. I mean, maybe it's not zoning that important.
You know, and, and I agree. It could be something through, you know, other, yeah.
So along this corridor, where would be the best places for developing housing?
Far north end of it.
The one where we have a floating zone now.
Yeah, almost where you have, um, eh, to be honest with you, there was a project called Jamestown that was actually proved at the corner of Scantic and Route Five back in ninety-seven. And it was a multifamily development that never went forward. So there, that actually was.
Where that farm is now?
Yeah, yeah. So you have Fitch Meadow, right? That's the one housing that you have on there, um.
There's so much noise there. I mean,
There is.
It's very undesirable to live there. Unless the state starts coming up with, um, you know, the equivalent of speed cameras for noise, you know, I wouldn't put housing anywhere along Route Five. It's just, I've stood, I've stood on Main Street with some of the people at the north end of Main Street and talked to them, you know, and I was out campaigning and it's like, you can't even have a conversation in their backyard. So I wouldn't put any housing unless we do something about the noise and that's really a state issue.
But your far northern area is where you have any kind of residential existing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there is less, um, noise up there, I, I think.
I can't think of a lot of.
But Sullivan and Sullivan and Route Five is very noisy.
Yeah, north of that.
Before he swings around.
Same trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going down to the two lanes.
Yeah, they're all, you know, coming out of Mobis or.
It isn't, I don't think it's the Mobis trucks. I mean, it, it's people with hot rods and, you know, coming and doing wheelies and, uh,
What, test driving the vehicles from the auto auction up in East Winter?
Not that good. But you do have a lot of that. I live just off of Route Five and at night, I hear drag racing.
Yeah.
I can't, I don't know where they're doing it.
I'll cut it out, I'm sorry, Paul.
I always liked that Q and A.
All right, so from what I've gathered, it sounds like the, the, a lot of the elements in the last plan were kind of focused on aesthetics, beautification, and we'll maybe add in some additional redevelopment focus. Um, does that kind of sum up everyone's thoughts, comments on Route Five?
Were there any, um, things from the survey, any input from the survey that addressed Route Five? I, I saw there was. I'm just not seeing or remembering exactly what it said.
A lot of the, you know, page thirty-three has got Route Five stuff, you know, run priorities for each of these districts.
First question was on tech, or priorities for business development, tax revenue was number one. Concerns about development. Okay, here's, uh, shopping, that is the next one. Get the power, just support additional economic development. Would you, would you support expansion of the business zones or intensification of business uses in the following areas? And Route Five had the most support of all the commercial districts.
I think that includes Nutmeg.
It kind of quarter, you're kind of the.
The zone includes some of those areas, but I think in people's mind, when they're reading the questions, I think they're thinking direct access off of Route Five, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
Although it's fascinating to ride a bike in that area there.
Your brain.
No, off of Route Five. I have ridden down Route Five. It's actually pretty good.
It's a big right of way. Yeah, I was gonna say, you got a lot, a lot of pavement there.
But, uh, uh, you know, back in that business, there is a fascinating collection of businesses in there.
This question on prioritizing.
Yeah, this is.
So warehousing distribution was Route Five, but also a lot of none of the aboves, and then manufacturing also clearly Route Five. But interestingly, professional office and some of the retail and residential uses, it wasn't far off, you know, Town Center and Sullivan Avenue. So that kind of idea of having a more mixed commercial industrial focus, it doesn't seem to be out of the, out, out of line with the community perception. Some red, some dark in the small text. It's hard to see.
Well, probably thought it was a good place to open a business.
I went by that day and all nine of their, um, tractor trailers were parked.
What's that?
Side lot. They had nine trailers parked there, you know.
Where?
At pride at the spot where they're supposed to park.
You know.
I, I went by the other day, there were fourteen.
In spaces or not in spaces? Cause it's not enough spaces.
Two were not, there's twelve spaces. There's two that were parked.
Otherwise.
Yeah. One, the entrance, one was there, and then one was next to the guardrail.
Will you keep an eye on it? Let me know. No, I mean, if we had to have them put more parking signs out there, whatever.
He does, he likes their.
Well, I, I think the solution would be more, maybe redesign it a little way where they could get a couple more spaces versus signs saying they can't, you know? I'd rather have more opportunity than less.
I like the way the brewery handled the parking. They've got this whole grassy area now, pretty dark.
That's not handling it. Well, what I'm saying, Steve, I drove by it and out front, every piece of grass was covered with cars.
Yeah.
Um, in fact, they pulled in like off of Sullivan Avenue and that was the, a new parking space and there was fifteen cars like that.
This weekend?
Yeah, this past, yeah.
Well, the Oktoberfest thing, it was just mobbed all day long.
All right, we have four minutes, so.
Ooh, what else you want? Where are we now?
So just to kind of, so that wraps up the development focus. We got, we got a lot of good conversations tonight, good feedback to help us start crafting those goals, objectives, actions. And I think this, a lot of our conversation tonight will continue when we talk about infrastructure next week. So we'll talk about sidewalk, transfer, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. We'll talk about transportation, infrastructure, community facilities. Um, so I think we planted a lot of good seeds tonight that we can talk about in a few weeks. And then we have, um, a work session penciled in for December to start, start going through goals, objectives and strategies. We also have a floating meeting that, um, we probably will wanna use, cause that's a lot to cover in one night.
I think if we do a meeting in December, we should try and plan that as soon as possible for, to.
Yeah, don't get too close to Christmas, I mean.
We could do the first Tuesday of December because you have the second Tuesdays, your regular meeting.
The only problem will, I'll, I'll be.
Oh, you're WPCA that night.
All right, you guys can.
And then at the next meeting in October, I think too, maybe we'll reserve a few minutes at the end to just talk about potential special focus areas and I can workshop with Michelle a little bit too, um, based on kind of what we've heard to date. I think we have a couple of potential options, you know, open space. We had some loose ends to button up. Uh, I think tonight we have a little bit, you know, some loose ends around housing, how much and where, um, to maybe button up. But we can kind of talk through in October of where we best see, uh, that task being used. Any questions on schedule?
Yeah, I do, I do. December, on my calendar, and it must have been talked about at some point, I have this P O C D meeting on the nineteenth. Are we suggesting moving it to the fifth, the first Tuesday?
Are, are you available then? If, if we can, I think it would be better just.
I totally agree. I think I should be.
That gets very close to, uh.
Yeah.
I'm wanting to be in town.
We'll confirm. I'll, I'll let Pat check the schedule and confirm, but we'll, we'll say that.
Okay. And then that maybe leaves the nineteenth for another Lena's trip or whatever. If we want.
Yeah, I went when I had last year already.
If we want.
It was a Christmas party.
You know, be party girl.
Yeah, I'll turn it back to the chairman for a favor motion.
Oh, yay. Okay, um, so is there any other business to come before this committee? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
We've reached it.
We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.